Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 14th Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. And council members, sorry, Council Deputy President Batiste, Council Members Winterstein, and Council Member Ramos are excused this evening. We will start with ID 0236, Park Strategic Plan, with our own Jeff Watling, Parks Director.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Excited to be here tonight, excited to walk through the draft Park Strategic Plan. We've had it out in the community for about three weeks now. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. I know I've had a chance to talk with a couple of you, but really looking forward to, again, walking you through this and getting some of your feedback, comments, questions, hearing your discussion as we begin to position this for future adoption. So what I hope to do tonight is utilizing both some of the pages of the park plan itself and some of the storyboards. We did some visuals that helped us as we went back out to the public to talk through this plan, so using some of those visuals, walked through the plan. But I thought I'd start first with where we started. And that was, as we launched into this endeavor, we were aware of some really important goals, and goals that came from you as council, goals we were hearing from the community that really came on the heels of the prior park plan, and some of those goals that really drove this was engagement. It was important to hear the voices, that this plan was very much informed and needed to be informed by the community and the voices of the community. It's a plan that really sought and needed to provide that big picture, to provide a vision for our parks, our trails, our open space system, to look at it comprehensively as opposed to element by element. Another one was really a goal that this be an actionable plan, this be something that's usable, something that as we identify this, as we adopt it, it can lead us, it can inform us, it can inform other planning efforts, and it can also be a tool as those new great ideas come in, as they often do. So I think this draft really meets those goals. I'm hoping to go over this overview in about 15 minutes and then open it up for discussion and conversation. Before I jump too far in, though, I'd want to do some introductions. Jennifer Fink, who's been my cohort in this, as we've gone through this. Greg Brower from Berger Partnership is here, sort of the lead of our consultant team that really aided and supported us. Brad Book, our park board chair. The park board has served as our, oh, and Linda from the park board vice chair. The park board really served as the steering committee throughout this whole effort, as you see that I go through this. So with that, let's jump in. So these next two slides represent pages 12 and 13 of the plan. I wanted to highlight them just because the process itself, the timeline, I think really maps out the community voices that we really sought and looked for throughout this process, both in terms of an initial outreach, but then check-ins. And also through this timeline, the frequency and the amount of work that the park board did as that steering committee, whether it was looking at engagement strategies in March, whether it was the park board retreat we had in August that really took the feedback and started to align strategic projects all the way through this process. I'd also point out, in early January, you'll see and you'll recall, we saw this opportunity as this plan was reaching its fruition, as Central Issaquah Visions was doing its work. In January, we initiated and really saw that opportunity with the Green Necklace and the Parks Department and the consultant team taking a little deeper dive into the Green Necklace and bringing some clarity and some unity for that vision, but also how Central Issaquah and the Central Issaquah Plan and the Park Plan can have a bridge, that necklace can serve as a bridge between those two documents. I'll touch on the Green Necklace a little bit later in this presentation. This represents the tail end of that timeline, some of our artwork out at Squawk Valley Park. So Phase One Engagement. We really began, like many strategic efforts begin, really asking and having aspirational conversations with our residents. Aspirational meaning, what are your hopes, dreams, and fears for the park system? What's working well? What's not working well? How do we take that honest look in the mirror and ask our community how the system is supporting and serving them? We had a chance last August to update you in a work session from that public engagement and some of the guiding principles that began to take shape. There are seven guiding principles that you'll see in these bullets that really began to guide and shape the work that came after it. Those guiding principles were community, active lifestyles, safety and health, nature and the environment, access and connectivity, facilities and maintenance, looking at the long term, and administration, overall administration of the system. What the community told us in Phase One Engagement was, there are many, many opportunities within the system. There is a lot of potential within the system that they wanted to see come out. There was a real desire for connectivity. There was a real desire and interest in how we might modernize our system and some of the active areas of our system so that they can better function and better serve the community. Another element that began to come out of that Phase One Engagement that really carried through this whole document, and quite frankly, also carried through our Green Necklace work, was, and it's represented in the map below, it's this idea of, we have this city that is so blessed with public lands all around us. We also have a city that most of our current residents live along the edges of the city, and we have this circle in the middle, Central Issaquah, that we are in the midst of really trying to position for redevelopment. So this idea of these three concentric circles, if you squint and kind of think of them as circles, we have these three concentric circles that really, our public system, our public parks, trails, and open space system has an opportunity to connect and unify and support through all three of those. And so that really began to resonate in our thinking and our work, and like I said, carried through this effort. So Phase Two Engagement took place last fall, after we did a lot of work, a lot of evaluation, a lot of assessment, began to put together and bring together some strategic projects. We went back out to the community in the fall and really wanted to hear back from them and really ask, hey, did we hear you correctly in Phase One Engagement? We took those projects and began to ask some questions for our residents to prioritize those projects, to help inform that work. We also had a budget allocation question that one of the tables in the park plan really reflects some of the feedback we got. In that question, we asked residents, how would they invest an imaginary $100, $100 park bucks? How would you proportionately invest those $100 over these five general categories of investment into our park system? And those five were acquisitions and preservation of natural areas and open space, additional athletic field capacity, connectivity, development of new city parks and amenities, and then lastly, reinvestment within our existing parks. We got some very interesting feedback. We did this survey through Peak Democracy. We had just over 600 responses. You'll see, overall, the responses were skewed very much towards athletic fields. We really thought it was important to dissect that further. When we looked at how Issaquah residents wanted to invest into their system, it was much more balanced, to be honest. There was a lot of proportionality, a lot of balance between those five critical areas. When you pulled the data from outside Issaquah, this isn't surprising, and we talked a lot about this with the park board, I would say, non-residents want to invest where they and how they use the system. So we have a lot of non-residents who come to utilize our athletic fields. They'd love to see more athletic field investment. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's important for us as we went through the prioritization process and as we went through prioritizing those strategic projects and putting them in near-term, mid-term, long-term buckets, we really felt it was a higher priority to be most responsive to our residents and our residents' desire and interest to proportionately invest into our system.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yeah.
There's some, if you can go back to the previous one, there's some math error there because for Issaquah residents and outside of Issaquah residents, the numbers total up to 100% plus or minus 1%, but overall respondents, it only adds up to about 90%. And also that last category, reinvesting in existing parks, if Issaquah residents were at 20% and outside of Issaquah residents were at 13%, the total couldn't be at 20%.
Right.
So something, there's some math errors.
We'll, yep, we'll check that out. Good catch. So themes. As we went through both of those sets of engagement, these were the five themes that really resonated and really became framework for the strategic projects themselves. Those themes were, and I'll go down them, placemaking. How do we collaborate with the community to look at reimagining and reinvesting into our public spaces, our parks, our trails? How do we strengthen that connection between people and spaces and places? Placemaking is a term, it's a phrase that you maybe have heard over the last 10 or 15 years that tries to understand, there's an art to public spaces, that you want to create places that people want to hang out in and experience. It doesn't require a scheduled activity to fill that public space. Connectivity really speaks for itself. This is incredibly strong in this community, this desire to connect to and within the city and public spaces and schools and shopping areas within the city, but also connectivity to the public lands around us. Innovative action, how do we utilize innovative thinking, planning, creativity, partnerships to really explore and find opportunities to maximize and position our park system to serve our residents well now and well into the future? Vital environment, how do we, as we understand, well over 75% of our land that we steward now is open space and natural area? How do we make sure we're positioned to manage and steward and celebrate that natural environment and continue that legacy of investment into protection of our public lands within and around us? Lastly, active lifestyles, how do we understand there's an interest for diversifying the opportunities within and around our system, and how do we support that and look at providing additional elements that support the lifestyles that our residents want? Looking at trailheads and really being strategic about where trailheads are. Dog parks, creative and more diverse play spaces, getting creative about athletic fields are all examples of that. As we then landed upon the strategic projects, this is, this sort of kicks off the strategic project portion of the plan, really that identification map that takes that big picture and in a lot of ways reflects what we heard collectively from the community. This represents 50, just over 50 projects, 51 projects, some large, some small. I think it really reflects and reflects the geographic balance that we are seeking to achieve and how we position our park system for serving our community, both current and This goal, this desire for unifying the system, so as we're looking at individual projects for years to come, we have a big picture, we have an understanding of how we're comprehensively unifying the system to balance those singular decisions on, as well as what I was saying earlier in terms of projects that represent our keen interest and desire in stewarding and managing our open spaces, whether it's the creek corridors, whether it's our forested hillsides, or other sensitive lands in and around Issaquah. What we try to do with this map is where the projects had an identified site and location, we map them. As you become familiar with this, you'll notice some of the numbers don't have a site identified with them, so they're on the table to the left, but they're listed as no identified site yet. Dog Park is one of those projects that we see as a real near-term strategic project, but there's a siting process that we want to engage the community with before we try and identify that site within this planning effort. Another part of this section that complements the strategic projects, but one we felt was really important to draw out in the strategic plan, is there are some really strong movements and really strong elements that we see in many ways already do define our park system, but in some ways could define this community's park system even more. And it's this creek corridor, this north-south corridor that's identified by the blue and the red, really when you look at combining what we have as the Rainier Trail Corridor that connects to East Lake Semamish Trail, that actually connects down south into Tiger Mountain, along with all the properties we've acquired and the opportunity we have along the Issaquah Creek Corridor, you have this amazing compelling element that the strategic projects really play upon to create a north-south connection from Squawk Valley Park to the south, all the way up to Lake Semamish State Park and Lake Semamish to the north. This is, in many ways, represented in another map. When you look at the acquisitions that have already occurred, the public lands that have already occurred along this corridor, it's not too hard, really, to begin to imagine. We can start making these connections. In a lot of ways, this vision isn't a new one. It's, I think, building upon decades of great work by community leaders here in Issaquah. This plan just tries to, I think, bring a bigger point of emphasis to the opportunity that we have to really create a strong, compelling corridor within our system. Another corridor that we identified and speak to in the Green Necklace as well, and just jump back to this, is we have a goal for a number of east-west connections through the city, but a real strong opportunity we have in partnering with other cities and with Mountains to Sound is the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail. And this regional vision of creating a trail corridor up through Mountains to Sound Greenway that eventually, quite frankly, connects to the vision that State Parks has for a trail heading all the way to Spokane. So the opportunity we have of really making that a strong east-west corridor, and where do we want to strategically locate that? Where would we want residents and visitors alike to experience Issaquah as they go through that corridor is a terrific opportunity. Another very strong sort of anchor element to this plan is the Green Necklace itself. As I mentioned earlier, in January, we had the opportunity to lead an interdepartmental effort to further clarify, to further build upon the work, a lot of great work that has happened with the Green Necklace. And the lens that we took was, how does this Green Necklace not only relate and support Central Issaquah and the very important goals of Central Issaquah Visions, but also how it connects and supports the broader park system as well? We had a number of joint meetings, joint meetings being Park Board and Planning Policy Commission, PPC. It was interesting, as we went through these charrettes and these exercises, so often residents wanted to go outside the Central Issaquah borders, meaning they didn't want to just be constrained within. And so I think it really supported that concentric circle map that it was emphasizing earlier. As we think of these 17 elements that make up the Green Necklace, these 17 elements really have a relationship to Central Issaquah, but also to Greater Issaquah as well.
Somewhere in these charts, it should probably include the localized connections into the mountains that, you know, beyond the major east-west trail, the fact that we have a bunch of, it'd be interesting to add to this, the connections up onto Tiger, Squawk, and Cougar.
Yeah. So as we get into the strategic projects as well, it's a great point, we have a number of those connections identified and really opportunities to, in some ways, either formalize or enhance some of those trailheads.
And some of those trailheads are hard to do, right? Like the one on Squawk up at my house, that's 1,000 feet above sea level, but some of the ones onto Squawk, some ones onto Cougar are much closer to sea level and much easier to connect to.
Right.
And apropos to some of the other conversations the community's having right now about activity and open spaces.
Absolutely. No, that's a great comment. In fact, I would add one that we really see as a strong, compelling opportunity to even this anchor corridor and sea level, as you mentioned, Squawk Valley Park, I'm going to quickly point to it. Element three there, when you look at how that's strategically located, and I think right now it feels isolated, it feels disconnected, but what that property represents, not only as a starting point for this valley trail, but we really see the opportunity, it could become a trailhead as well. It could be a park, but it could also, without too much imagination, become a trailhead through this public land into the Squawk system as well. So as you look at the definition of Squawk Valley Park, we're pulling out those opportunities that really, again, look at serving our residents, but getting out into the public lands as well. One example.
I like it because if you wanted to 2,000 feet of vertical, you know, why should you have to go all the way out to Tiger?
Right.
Want to do it closer.
Yep. Yep. Well, and I think as we see, some trailheads in and around us are overburdened, quite frankly. And so as we look at sort of spreading that out a little bit and creating multiple trailheads to connect to. One item I wanted to add to the necklace, I apologize, is as that work has been going through land and shore, and will be going through land and shore in terms of how that Green Necklace work connects to Central Issaquah Visions, we're also adapting as we're looking at the Park Strategic Plan. What we're planning right now, though it's not in the draft plan, is that Green Necklace, the full body of that work, will become a chapter within the Park Plan as we're, again, sort of ready to respond to what that Central Issaquah Visions work tells us. But I think what's important is that we really see that work as a bridge between those two documents. The elements that we've identified in the necklace, a number of those are park-related projects, so we carried those same numbers, those same identifying numbers are the same numbers those projects are within the Park Strategic Plan. So again, trying to create that uniformity.
And Jeff, can you remind me, what's the super dark line that runs across near the bottom of the state park? Curvy, very, very, very dark line.
Yeah, that is a, in essence, an off-rider way trail connection that we see connecting and really in some ways being another east-west corridor through town. Whether you wanted to go to the south on the purple line, or whether you wanted to go through the state park and then imagine connecting to the Issaquah Creek Corridor, you'd be able to get through town a variety of ways.
Can I ask why you denoted it differently than the other proposed major public space or connections? Does it have a different role or level of importance or?
I think as we talked, I mean, given that it's on state park land, given that it's on...
Love it.
Well, the, oh, you're right, and then east. I don't...
Okay. But it's similar to those, the north-south proposed major public space or connections.
Yep.
Thanks.
So as we started with the map of strategic projects, and then as you see in the plan, we took those projects and gave descriptions and connected them to the themes. We conclude that section with this table that tries to compact all that information on these projects and how they get sort of prioritized out in near-term, mid-term, and long-term buckets. These buckets are really intended then to inform our future five-year CIP work. We've also tried to identify that we have not and wouldn't want to go to a level of design that's able to cost-estimate all these projects. We really want to have future public engagement helping to form that. We have an understanding, and we sort of did the Yelp version of, is it a $1, $2, or $3 sign in terms of level of cost and complexity? We also wanted to identify those projects that we really see as great opportunities for partnerships, whether public-public partnerships, public-private, or any variety thereof. We also, though, each project was put in sort of a primary theme, many, if not all of these projects really hit on multiple themes. And this table does a nice job of being able to reflect and represent that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So going back to that for a second, so we have, we have an existing, I'm sorry, an existing Park Capital Projects list. What's the relationship between the intent of that existing list, which currently covers through, I think, 2020?
Mm-hmm.
And this, and what does this supersede, or is this in addition to? You sort of get where I'm going with that question.
Great question. Yeah, if you remember, as we went through that CIP process, it was always the one saying, hey, this was a hard exercise because we didn't have the Park Strategic Plan done, and we didn't really want to, we didn't want to guess. And so I think that CIP exists, this then, once it's worked through and adopted, this, the Park Plan, would become that tool that would help inform the next CIP, the next five-year CIP that we do first quarter of next year. There is some, as we have looked through and are constantly, I'm probably looking at this in my sleep sometimes by now, there are a couple of projects that we've identified, and as we looked, we looked at the scores, realized that there's some amendments. One that I'd want to point out that does kind of tie to this CIP work is Hillside Park. Though it's identified here in the long term, it's intended to be near-term, and I think what it's representative of and really reflective of is some of the CIP discussions that happened historically during the last Park Plan process, and also some of the feedback we heard from the community as we went through this, that along with the small, Hillside Park is a large amount of acreage that has a small park on it, it has a cemetery, it has an interest for more enhanced trails and opportunities to connect Squawk community down to the valley. We really see that as being a near-term project, and given some of the pressures and policy decisions we have around the cemetery and around that park, we really see the opportunity for a bigger site master plan effort to help really answer some of those questions. But doing that in the near term is something we caught in this as well, as we're doing our own vetting through this draft process.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So the, this isn't meant for all fluff, this plan. We then wrap up with, how are we going to get there? How are we going to do this? And I think the simple answer, much like the Chinese parable, one bite at a time. It's really how this is going to happen. There's no magic in this. But hopefully, as we do those bites, as we have those more informed future policy decisions, we're able to keep this big picture in mind. I think another key reminder, and as we were going through this effort, this table really began to inform and I think help some of these questions of, where does this fit? Where does this strategic plan fit? In a lot of ways, this plan is not an ends in itself. This plan really is, it's just the starting line. It's not the finish line. Are we excited to hear that? But it really, it's the foundation. And so this graphic just helps to reflect the importance that this work anchors and is the foundation for future work. So this Park Strategic Plan... for future work. So this park strategic plan, as you start on the left side, that is intended to inform the comp plan, the five-year CIP. It's another edit we caught that we need to make. Discussions about funding strategies. How do we want to fund our park system? This is intended to inform it. This isn't intended to be the answer for that. Other city plans. So many other city planning efforts going on that we want this plan to, again, not be the, some type of mandate, but it's really intended to inform and influence, whether it's right-away corridor planning projects, or old-town vision, or Central Issaquah visions. That in turn, obviously informs annual budgets, operating and capital discussions and decisions by you as council. That then allows us to get into actual capital project work and master planning, where we would see another heavy, more site-specific phase of public engagement, where we're really going back out to the community now that we have an actual capital project that we're working on and designing and planning for. Then all of that work helps to inform the outcome, a completed project. I'd point one thing out on this table, that the capital projects piece is really an important checkpoint, and one that as I have come on board here a year and a half ago, so enjoyed my time here, there was a lot of conversation going on about some capital projects, the skate park, Central Park Pad 1 in particular, and how are we going to fund those, and how do they fit? And I so often remember the question, how does this fit in the big picture? How does this connect to the big picture? And hopefully, the next time we're at that point of doing capital projects, we'll be able to collectively say, oh, cool, this was informed by, and we can look back and see how it fits within the park plan. I think I'm way over time. I'll close with this slide. We also wanted to ask ourselves and have in the plan some key questions of how are we going to measure success for this plan? How do we know it's going to be successful? And in a lot of ways, these questions really go through that and allow us to think, is this, is this serving as that big picture we need it to be? Is this helping to inform other planning work? Is it just sitting on the shelf gathering dust? That's not going to be successful. Another part of these questions, and a key element we put into this plan, is we want it to be a planning tool. So we have a, what we call, we're actually probably going to rename it, but we call it the toolkit. It's not the full kit in itself, but it really is intended to be, because we know there's going to be the next great thing that's going to come two years from now, the next great project. That wasn't in here, that's the new hot thing, that's all the urgency. We've built this toolkit towards the end of the plan that really, in essence, allows any new idea or thought to go through the same vetting project that these 51 projects went through. So it really is hopefully going to allow us to be nimble, but also be disciplined in that, and not get distracted by the next big thing, but let it vet just as this other work went through. So with that, thank you. I think in many ways, this effort confirmed what we already know. This plan doesn't represent 180-degree change from what this community has done and believed in. In many ways, it builds upon the great work of many leaders through the decades, Harvey Manning being one. That was a fun picture to end with. But we had a chance, these last three weeks, we had an open house a couple of weeks ago. We've gotten some feedback from the community, mostly really positive. We have gotten some great suggestions that are in some ways helping us, I think, if anything, reformat a little bit the plan and do some additional refinement. But look forward to your thoughts, feedback, discussion, and where we want to go from here.
And before we take questions from council, I just want to mention to the public that it is my intention, this, well, it's always our intention, to take public comment in these work sessions, and actually didn't last month, and I apologize, but I will be taking public comment as we go item by item. So if, think about, if you want to take a couple of minutes to give us your thoughts. And with that, I will turn it over to my fellow council members. What do we, questions we have? Councilmember Ray.
I just want to start with saying, bravo. This is really a nice piece of work, Jeff. You and the team, just, you know, spectacular work. Couple of questions for you. Did you learn anything new? I mean, you talked about how we kind of built on the back of giants, and we confirmed a lot that we already knew. But what did you learn that you didn't know going in? What was your big aha moments?
Great question. I think one aha moment, and this isn't rare for Issaquah, was I think Issaquah at times might have a history of having active uses and passive uses, in some way compete against each other. And so how do we, both in this and in future work, try and demystify that, and not think of those as necessarily competitive elements, but very supportive elements, and try and sort of lift that false choice, if you will, between active and passive? A healthy, vibrant system needs to be both. It has to be both. I think something else that was a real aha was what I showed you before, that those concentric circles and the opportunity we have to really unify, not see those as separate districts or separate planning efforts, but those are really, we need to connect and create a system that supports in and through all of Issaquah.
Great. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to echo councilmember Ray's bravo. I think it's a very, very thorough and very visually appealing plan. So thank you for presenting it today and for all the hard work. I had a question about, a couple of questions. So the first one is, how do you think community members will access this plan, or what are your plans for being able to share the plan with people in the future and also give feedback? Because I know that this will be a living document in the future.
Yeah. So this will live multiple places. We definitely want this to live online. This will be a document that as we're doing, whether it's site-specific master planning work, whether we're doing, whether that's with the park board or with all of you, we see this as being something we're going to reference quite often. So we will hopefully foster and really welcome residents to continue to look at this and feed, and see this, either online or hard copy.
And then, so I had some questions about the, well, so first about the survey, which was about, there were two surveys in the parks plan, and one was 2015, so a little bit older, but it was a telephone survey, and that's the one that's referred to as the statistically valid survey.
Right.
And when I was reading the plan, that was the one that I gravitated to, probably because it had this big statistically valid survey heading.
Right, right.
And so I wondered if you could describe a little bit the differences, because to me, the differences are fairly significant. And I noticed, too, that in the, in the online survey, there is a breakdown of about half, a bit more than half of the people said where they resided, but actually, about half, we don't actually know where they resided. So we're looking at only about a quarter that we know for sure we're in Issaquah, and the phone surveys are a little bit different in that regard. But if you could just describe the differences, how you see the two surveys in terms of the outcomes?
Absolutely. I think, for the most part, that the survey responses were quite similar and confirming for one another. Two of the tables that we, there's one table we pull out on the plan, and I know, thank you, councilmember Hunt, for referencing that the table on page 18 was one that we pulled out. And then we pulled out the table I just showed you from the Phase 2 engagement. Again, I think both resonated that a lot of elements are very important to our system. Whereas the statistically valid survey asked questions that didn't ask to proportionately delineate between the two, they really spent a lot of time asking, what's important to you singularly? I think what we heard and what we saw was some very, very impressive numbers, and the table shows that, that, you know, 90% of responses feel that, you know, acquisition of properties is important. And I think that really confirms what we really wanted to drive in this plan, that in a lot of ways, our natural surroundings, the creeks that run through us, that it so defines Issaquah. And so I think we really carried that through in how we prioritize investments in the plan. The second, knowing we had that statistical valid survey, knowing we didn't necessarily have the budget to do another one, that's where that Phase 2 investment, we used peak democracy, and wanted to not necessarily just ask level of importance singularly, but hey, if you had 100 bucks, how would you, how would you spend your money? How would you balance this ability to invest that? And so we really saw those, I don't know if you guys want to respond to this as well, we saw those as complementary data that helped to build and inform the prioritization.
Thanks. And I have one last question, which is about local improvement districts as a potential funding mechanism. I very briefly looked online about this. It seems possible in some circumstances. And so I just wondered if you had any information about that. And I appreciate the, very much, the toolkit, the list of potential funding mechanisms and partnerships and all of that creativity, and this was just something that I wanted to know a little bit more about.
Yeah. So in the, in the big picture, in the funding chapter, we, in fact, as we've worked with our department feedback, interdepartmental feedback, finance department and others, we're trying to figure out how to, that's not an all-inclusive list. There's so many funding strategies that we want to make sure in the final document, we're wording that correctly. We want this to inform a funding strategy discussion and not try and be the answer. Specifically to local improvement districts, it's very interesting timing in that the State Parks and Recreation Association, as we as professionals are engaging with the legislature and trying to figure out how to, what options do cities have? What options do cities and counties have? One of the ideas being explored is much like transportation LIDs, what would it look like for cities to have that as a, as a tool to consider, either putting before their voters for a local improvement district that would support parks? It's not, that's what I know. I don't know that it's a tool right now, but it may be something in the future for us to consider.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I don't have any questions right now, but I wanted to echo the other comments and say, still digesting, but from, from what I have read in here so far, and I'm just blown away by this product that we have here, and really cannot emphasize enough how pleased I am with this, given where we were when we first started this. So thank you very much for all the hard work. Really much appreciated.
Lot of community voices in this. One fun thing we tried to do as you're looking at it is, and we're going to emphasize it a little more, you'll see quotes along the way. Those aren't random quotes. Those are quotes pulled out from all the survey feedback, the resident feedback we heard.
So one question, and then some comments, and then we'll get to public comment. In the state of the system, you've got, you've got a couple of charts that look somewhat similar, but they're, they have an important difference. And the first one is parcels within a quarter-mile walk of park, trails and sidewalks. And then the second one is parcels within a quarter-mile walk of park or open space, trails and sidewalks, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the second one is a happier chart than the first one, right? First one has some recreation deserts to it. And I think those recreation deserts are real. Like, I think it's great that there's, I mean, I live in an area that has access to a trailhead almost exactly a half mile away, but it's a trailhead up onto Squawk Mountain, and it's nice. But I was just out in, as it happened the other night, in Clehany, where I lived in 2003 to 2006, and there was just, there was a tweak in my heart, because within two blocks of our house was two kids' parks. And when we moved on to Squawk, my kids were nine and six. So they were, they were getting towards the end of it. But it's still, I think there are so many young families in these parts of the city that don't have as much recreation. And I see this, I see this comment on the second page. So, "Many properties categorized as open space are readily accessible to pedestrians. If appropriately improved with amenities, these already-owned lands can provide recreation resources to growing population centers." Yeah, but, right? And I go back to that Squawk Mountain trailhead, which is, you know, room for about six cars, and you just, you start walking on that trail, right?
Right.
You know, open space is open space, and I think it never substitutes, you know, we run a risk if we try to do too many things with a parcel of land. You know, open space wants to be open space, doesn't also want to have swing sets. But we need swing sets, and we need the other amenities that young families want to get their kids out and get fresh air when fresh air is worth getting. That having been said, I'm also really impressed with this report. I know how hard city staff has worked for the last three years on this, and I really appreciate it. And, you know, council has been, has really, you know, there was good work early, and then we were like, no, we want even more, because we want this to be something that we can really hang a lot of our public decisions off of. And through all your guys' hard work, that certainly seems it. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we do with this going forward, and seeing how this serves us as we make strategic decisions going forward. And with that, are there any other comments? All right. So I will open it up to the public, and I will offer anyone who wishes to speak to this, up to three minutes with council. Or if nobody wants to, they don't have to. Well, it looks like we have at least one person. Mr. Kapler? I'm up to the mic.
Not so much about the plan, but the issue of sports fields. King County provides us all these free parks in terms of open space, Cougar Mountain, both sides of Squawk, Grand Ridge Park. But if you live out in Preston and your kids are in soccer or something, it costs you a lot of money. And King County, to get some of their money out of their park system on these kinds of facilities, charges plenty. And that's one reason we're seeing the interest out there in more families that aren't, maybe don't have their kids in the more elite leagues and those kinds of things are looking, they're more in the Issaquah stuff and the school district stuff, and not in those fields at Preston, which are really tied up with very expensive soccer leagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Marsh?
So one, I think finally we might have a chance of getting parks with intent, rather than just saying, wow, look, now we have an opportunity, and, and we don't really know, we haven't talked to the public, but let's go for it anyway. And I appreciate that to the nth degree. They have worked very hard. Now, me, I want to be able to use the plan. I want to be able to understand the plan. And I don't quite see how one of, one of the issues, that a person has a good idea, right? And they say, wow, this should go into our park system. It's not clear from this plan what sort of a mechanism there is for those, those good ideas, right? It doesn't have a natural interface with the public. And within that interface, we live sort of in our neighborhoods, and this is not a very neighborhood-oriented plan. And it has many good things, but how do you decide whether you are satisfied with your parks system? And how do you ask people whether they are satisfied? Every five years, you have a statistically valid survey? So that is not really answered here to me. It's like, well, when we measure to see if it's working, there are really no measurables that are hard there. So, okay, if we're using soft measurables, who's ever asking the community how they're thinking about their park system? And so I think it's a little light on the community and the goals and policies, and it's light on the community interface section. And of course, I will pound on that, because that is, that is... And of course, I will pound on that because that is, that is my core. I like that we're looking at access, we're looking at multiple uses of parks. I am a little concerned that it seems to be we're planning hard for parks for people who are going to move here in the future. And it doesn't feel like the people who are already here are getting as much attention with this plan. So that is, that is a little distressing. The toolkit that they, and the process that they put the projects through doesn't have that lack of, of bias, just the plan does. And, and so that's a little awkward to me. It seems like if the toolkit is getting all the neighborhoods, the things that they might need, that the plan needs to reflect that a little bit better. So one last comment, which is going to make the, the parks staff even crazier than they've already made them with my anal retentive scanning of their plan. I, I want the conclusion and the short form of what this park plan, strategic plan is achieving at the front. I want to see very quickly that we got a cool set of strategic projects out of it. I don't want to have to wait till the very end after however many pages to do that. So I think with measurables up there and that conclusion, and then go into the plan and how you got there, that, that's a better format for me. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this before we move on? Going once? Going twice? All right. With that, we're going to move on to ID 0216, Transit Oriented Development, presented by Jen Davis Hayes and Hal Ferris.
Council President.
And our own City Administrator Emily Moon.
Thank you. I just have a few remarks as we kick this off. Ms. Jen, transition slides here. So we're here tonight to advance the discussion and deliberation on a particular aspect of the transit oriented development project. Staff presented a memo and a presentation and a couple of policy questions at the April 24th Committee of the Whole. Those pieces outlined the full TOD project and specific aspects of it. Highlights from that presentation included a funding update, project site considerations update, and some next steps, which include confirming the Opportunity Center tenants and use and a related city decision regarding a potential investment in that space. Also included some aspects of our negotiations and approval of a development agreement as next steps. And lastly, a next step of finalizing the short plat. This is a really messy equation, a very complicated puzzle that we are trying to put together. And we are looking for council's input to help us to limit or refine the options that are available to us. So we wanted to start tonight by just saying, we know it's uncomfortable. It's particularly uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable to us as well because we still have imperfect or incomplete information. And yet we're coming to you and asking for some feedback at this time. And that's because we've accomplished a great deal so far in putting together this highly complex public-private partnership. And while we still have more to determine, we believe we have enough now to come forward to you and engage you in some dialogue and seek some direction. So as you heard on April 24th, given the nature of the project, not all aspects of the project are candidates for direct public engagement and decision-making, but all aspects will be reflected in the council's deliberations on the development agreement and other pieces. One aspect in particular, where the city is the primary decision-maker, is the Opportunity Center. And that's what we're focused on this evening. Also attempted to keep the bigger picture deliberations with the full council. And tonight's attendance isn't reflective of that, but that was the attempt, as we knew that there was full council interest in this project and a desire for all of you to discuss it with each other. Another next step following tonight will be to draft a resolution with the developer regarding the city's commitment to the Opportunity Center. Our current timeline suggests that a resolution could come forward on that on June 4th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen for the presentation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. So again, thank you for being here tonight, having us here tonight to talk about the Opportunity Center. We'll do a brief overview of the project and discuss the funding gap and options. And again, we are here tonight to receive direction on the Opportunity Center use and investment, and then we'll talk about next steps. So we have an all-star cast here tonight that we'll be presenting to you, starting off with Emily. We also have our development team, Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development Solutions, and Dan Landas from King County Housing Authority, and David Fujimoto from the Office of Sustainability. We'll be here to talk more detail about the Opportunity Center. So we'll start off with, as Emily mentioned, we have done a lot of work to this point and we are at the moment when we need to have a direction from the city council in order to move forward. We will talk about these details tonight, but we want you to know that no decision has been made on the Opportunity Center user or in the investment has been promised to this point. The timing is really important because of the funding that the development team has acquired from both public and private funders, and they'll address that during their presentation tonight. So again, as Emily mentioned, we hope to come back on June 4th with a resolution. At the end of the, the discussion, we'll talk about the next steps, which include community outreach meetings. We plan to have two of those at least, and then our development agreement timing. I wanted to point out here for the timeline because this project has, taking a while, we've actually been talking about this project for quite a while, it has many moving pieces. And we won't actually see the TOD project being worked on until 2020 because first, the CenturyLink relocation site needs to be built and CenturyLink needs to move, but that plan for the TOD opening is in 2022. So with that, we'll move forward. And so we wanted to present upfront, as you listen to this presentation, what are the things we're requesting from you tonight? So should we continue to pursue the medical, dental, and behavioral health user that we identified through the Opportunity Center RFP, which we will provide you more details with tonight about? And then is the level of investment acceptable for this public benefit? And we will have, again, options tonight with, with dollar amounts and we'll have that discussion later. Any questions about this so far? Yes?
So I just want, I just want to make sure that I provide clarity. So there's a number, there's this Opportunity Center and there's a number of different potential tenants that could be engaged in the Opportunity Center. And you're going to talk about a couple of classes of potential tenants. And you want to know on at least one of those, let's say flavors, of what the Opportunity Center would look like, what our appetite is for that flavor, given what some of the, what it might take to make that flavor happen. But there's other flavors as well out there. And it's just on one of them, it's, it's more complicated or potentially a bigger, a bigger bill than on other flavors. And so you want to understand how we feel about that flavor, but there's also all these other flavors.
Right.
Okay.
And yes, and so the direction you provide us, the decision not, not tonight, but on June 4th, if that's possible, we would then go and pursue refining that flavor and coming back with more details during the development agreement process.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I have a procedural question and just to clarify. So tonight, we're really getting information from you and then we will give you direction on June 4th. Is that the thinking?
We would like some feedback tonight as far as, so if there's additional information. So we hope to come back on June 4th with, with a resolution for discussion, but for, also for approval or to pursue whichever option that, again, from tonight's discussion and other information that we need to gather and talking to their council members. Does that make sense?
And, and I'm going to, it's unusual that we only have four of the seven of us here. So I'm going to reach out to council members Ramos, Winterstein, and Batiste and ask them to get their feedback in as soon as they can, although with Councilmember Batiste being out, out of the country, she's probably going to be a little bit slower.
Sure. Yes. Thank you. So to step back for a moment, you know, what is TOD? So we, as we know, we're community and transition. We're moving from the auto-oriented to other options such as biking and walking. The concept of a TOD is not one project. And so I thought this image really reflected, well, what a TOD community is about. So we're talking about an area altogether. So it's also, tonight you heard about the Parks Strategic Plan. That's, that plays a piece in it. Our central Issaquah plan plays a piece in it. Our walk and roll strategy plays a piece on it. It's really bringing together diverse high activity uses, increasing transit usage, bike, biking, walking, people where, where people can live, work, shop, play, learn, all in one area. So what we're talking about for this one project does not, is not going to make a TOD area, but it's going to help make a large investment and start that towards our goal to align with the central Issaquah plan. So in the central Issaquah plan, this, again, this, this area is in the urban core, our regional growth center. We're going to create more housing with this project where there is no housing today. We're going to increase affordable housing where there is no affordable housing today. We're going to create a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented streetscape, which again, is lacking today. We're going to provide additional public spaces that are going to interact with our park across the street and we're going to make sure that the design is integrated with the area amenities since it's a transit center in the park. And overall, because it's adjacent to the transit center, it's going to increase and encourage transit, transit usage. Again, over time, we will see that change happening in our community. So as, as Emily mentioned, this is a complex project. We have multiple partners who are involved in this and multiple pieces of land. It is definitely, when we looked at doing this project, we approached it as a private-public partnership. We published the RFP for this project in December of 2016. And at that time, we had been working with CenturyLink for over a year to talk to them about their interest in relocating to another site. They were happy where they are located, is at ease of access on and off multiple freeways, highways. They serve a broader region. There wasn't another piece of land in Issaquah that we could easily identify for them to relocate to. We had the opportunity to purchase a King County surplus land and that made this whole thing possible. So when we did the RFP, we worked with Arch, our, our partnership and funding, to develop what we thought was possible on this site. And so these are the requirements that we said must be. We received three responses from Spectrum and King County Housing Authority, from Imagine Housing, and from Shelter Resources. Our panel in January 2017 included the mayor's office, Office of Sustainability, Economic Development, and Arch to look at all of the proposals based on the development team, their project soundness, the public benefit, and the project design. So we felt that Spectrum's and King County Housing Authority's proposal best represented the central Issaquah vision and also provided additional benefits. So I'm going to have Hal and Dan come up and talk about their proposal, but before I do, are there any questions about the actual process RFP for this? Okay.
Nope.
Hal?
Yeah. So when the RFP was first published, they called for 200 total units, approximately half of which were to be affordable. Oh, no, I'm Hal Ferris, by the way. I didn't say that into the microphone. And I'm glad to be here tonight, so. So when we reached out and asked if the King County Housing Authority wanted to join us, we really had a, a vision greater than what was required in the RFP to put together. And we really felt it was a large site, that the zoning was in place and that the, the opportunity was there to really create something different that has not happened in our region in terms of integrating affordability with the, with the pedestrian orientation on this site. So we, we submitted a proposal then, at that time, had 325 total units and there were approximately 155 that were affordable in our submission, along with the commercial space and the Opportunity Center and the Quarter Acre Plaza. As we worked that through, there were a lot of issues over the cost per unit to develop that project. And we've, I'll get into the reasons why here in a little bit. But we worked with the Housing Authority to see, could we better utilize the, the structure, the podium that we were building? And we came back in August with a, with a revision to our proposal to increase the total number of units to 355 and increase the, the number of units that were affordable to 175, and those are permanently affordable units, where previously some of our units were only affordable for 12 years. So those are things that we did to try to make the application the Housing Authority was to submit in September more competitive so that we could be more successful in achieving the money they needed to provide the amount of affordable units for the project. How do I advance?
Just arrow down.
Okay. This arrow? This arrow? Okay. So things we, and we had come and talked with you several times at this point in time. And we were, made the application in September, September 15th, I believe, is when the, went into the county and shortly thereafter for Arch funding. And at the same time, we had reached an MOU agreement along with the city, the Housing Authority ourselves, and CenturyLink. And one of the things CenturyLink included in that was we needed to be able to access their site to do our due diligence, it's called, to test for the environmental, the soils, the survey, and we weren't able to get that until October. So in late fall of this last year of 2017, we went out and were able to do our borings on site to test for environmental contamination, to test for the soil bearing capacity of the soil and the underground conditions, and, and to look at how our overall design was affected by that information. And we found was, one, was good news, was that neither the groundwater nor the soil tested positive above any cleanup level. There was, you know, minor amounts. They'd had a previously, an underground storage tank that had been removed and cleaned up and they'd gotten all the paperwork signed off on that a couple of years ago. We did find however, which is probably no surprise to anybody from Issaquah, that the groundwater in that location is six feet below the surface. I mean, it's right there. And you can look at the wetland between ourselves and the transit center and you can see the standing water there many months out of the year and certainly during the winter time. So that, we had, we had previously made a revision to our design, which had put a connecting parking garage, we called, down in the ground. And, and then we were having this large parking with underground, basically, and some surface parking still structured, but behind the buildings. And we realized that you can do that by pumping down the groundwater and building a bathtub, basically, a really big bathtub that would hold 275 cars. But we, we felt that we wanted to take another look at that. So we've come back with a modified design now that pulls, it's all 100% structured parking, so we're well in excess of your 50% requirement. And we have some on-grade parking that is immediately behind where the Opportunity Center would be and, and behind where the daycare and the, and the kidney center would be. But there is then a ramp inside the structure that takes you up to the next level where we have car parking and then you go up to a level above that. So we basically went up instead of down. And we saved the money on, you know, on digging a hole and putting all the waterproofing in, but we have to spend more structure. And it pushes the top floor of the building up 10 feet higher than it was before, but it's still well below, we're, I think, 85 feet tall total. I think we go to 120 feet or 115 feet by your zoning. So we're still, the maximum height we can go with our wood frame construction. So that, that is something we learned. So that is our third, basically, concept that we're at now. And we are looking to, as with the direction from the council on the Opportunity Center, we're actually looking at trying to see if we can't increase the amount of affordable units the Housing Authority is doing and add, hopefully 10 more units with the same, within the same podium base that we had before, as we're able to kind of refine it a little bit more. And that's all good news for Issaquah. It does nothing but create more affordability and it again, helps bring down the cost per unit, which is what we're trying to achieve for the Housing Authority. So those are the, the highlights of where we've been in our journey so far. And previously, the staff had identified, kind of in ranking order, all the funding that went into the project, but we had not filled in all the numbers. And these will change. The only thing we know for sure is that these numbers will change. And, and most of it will be the numbers at the top of the list as compared to the bottom of the list. And so you can see that where the bulk of the money, there's a loan that our firm with our capital partner will take out. We utilize a HUD loan and it gives, it's a long-term fixed mortgage rate, which is what makes it attractive. But there's $58 million loan, $30 million in private equity that our Laird Norton, our capital partner, will be putting in. So those are primarily going to the market rate and the affordable units that we have within that building. And it's also the same building that, right now, under one of the scenarios where the kidney center and the daycare would also be located. And then the other, I'll let Dan come up and talk about the other sources of funding that King County Housing Authority has put together. We do have the, the commercial tenants, the, the kidney center will own their space like a condominium, so. so their space of about 10,000 square feet will cost about $9 million. And then on top of that, they'll put all their equipment in and all of their other improvements that go into that. And then the very bottom, the multifamily tax exemption that you've waived, subject to our development agreement being approved, would be benefiting the, you know, the private side of the development. So you can see the city is an instrumental piece in terms of the chess-making and making all the pieces work, but in terms of actual economic contribution, they're very much in the minority at the bottom of the list with a very small percentage of the total capital. And I did want to say, I spoke, last time you saw me, at the committee, the whole, and was, expressed my opinion about the Opportunity Center, specifically Health Point and the mental health provider, Valley Cities, not being the best choice. And my opinion on that was specifically related to the one, as you'll see, that it requires the greatest commitment from the city, and it does require additional parking above and beyond. We, together at the Housing Authority and ourselves, we are very comfortable with the use of the health facility at this facility. Well, I've been to, since it was first proposed, my wife and I have driven around and have seen several of the Health Point facilities. They're very nice, they're well, very well-done. The people that participate there are, their primary constituents are people using Apple Health, Medicaid-supported healthcare. And those are people in our community that are at great risk in getting healthcare. So it's, there isn't another facility in Issaquah that provides that, and it's getting harder and harder for people that have Medicaid to be able to find care, or, you know, service providers that will service them. So that would be a good asset. The other not-for-profits that propose as well also provide a need, a service, that there's great need in Issaquah as well. So I think those are choices that the council needs to consider in their deliberations, so.
Hey, I'm Dan Landis. I'm with King County Housing Authority, and I just wanted to briefly talk about the financing that we have raised for the affordable units as well as what's left for us to raise. And we got, the good news is, we have gotten the hardest money that there is to get in this. The $10 million from King County that was, I think, twice what they put into any other project so far. And so we, a lot of people went into the success of that, including the city of Issaquah extensively lobbying on behalf of the project.
And that's stadium bond money, right?
That's correct.
That's out there. So every time you go to a Mariners game or a Sounders game, you are helping build transit or development at this point.
And the other funding was from ARCH, $2 million, which also is on the high end of what they've ever given to a project. And both of those, so we were awarded the county money in December, and I think we've been awarded the ARCH money. I haven't gotten the official word on that yet, but the, and certainly the city of Issaquah should be thanked for contributing to that, as well as a number of other east-side cities. So that money is competitive money. We had, and we got more than, we asked for the moon and got the moon, and so we're really happy about that. Well, however, the majority of the financing that will, it will take for us to build the housing is yet to be secured, and that's the low-income housing tax credits and the tax-exempt bond financing. Neither one of those are particularly competitive. We will get those, but what we don't know at this point in time is how valuable they will be. You may have seen in the last six months how the tax, the low-income housing tax credit program has kind of been turned on its head, and it's a lot different than it was when we submitted applications. We foresaw some of the changes, and I think our, the pricing for those tax credits that we had in our application is still accurate to what it would be today, but we don't know what it's going to be when we actually go out and sell those tax credits right before we start construction. So we're a little concerned there, and we're concerned about interest rates rising, as I think Hal is too, for his portion. So we are very anxious both to show progress to the public funders that have already committed money to this, as well as to avoid, kind of, or get this, get us to the point where we can lock in the rest of our financing, which we really can't do until we're about ready to start construction. So your ability to sort of help us tie up all of the pieces of this, and especially the financing for the Opportunity Center, is really helpful.
Thanks, Dan and Hal. So as we just saw, the project itself is a $165 million investment. So as we tonight talk about investment from the city, we wanted to let you see what the city has already committed for investment. So the top number here is the city waived impact and permit fees, and that's already in the IMC. So this is just for the affordable housing residential units. So the project will pay for impact fees for the, for the market rate residential units. So that does not mean that we're not paying any impact fees on this. And the commercial spaces will also pay impact fees. The relocation site costs, so that's, again, for the purchase remediation short plaid of the portion of the King County Island or King County Roads property. It's about $300,000, and that is cash that the city has expended already. And then the property tax is not collected over 12 years. For the multifamily tax exemption is valued at about $840,000. So again, this is on the residential portion of the TOD. We will still collect during that 12-year period property tax on the land and property tax on the commercial space that is not a nonprofit city. And we will also collect property taxes on the new location for CenturyLink, which is currently not, it was outside the city. Yeah.
Do we know what that same collection would be from CenturyLink? Do we know, like, what we would collect total over those 12 years if this project goes forward versus what we would collect from CenturyLink if nothing happened on that property?
Yeah. CenturyLink, over 12 years, pays about $59,000, about $60,000 a year, I'm sorry, for the full 12 years. Yeah. That's the city's portion of property tax, yes. So over 12 years, CenturyLink, if we didn't do anything, we would be collecting about $60,000. And CenturyLink is a utility, and it's, and it's getting a little more detail, but they assess their rate statewide as a, to kind of ensure that there's continuity between the different counties and then kind of pass down through King County. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't fluctuate as much as some other properties may.
It would be nice if we could, when this bill comes back, to put that up to show, you know, you've mentioned it verbally a couple of times, that, you know, we would have taxes coming in on the other pieces, but it would probably put a nice big exclamation point on it to show it versus that 60.
Perfect. Will do. And then, so again, as I mentioned, so the top and the bottom amounts, the, so the total's $4.4 million. The $3.2 and the $840,000, again, are things that are not cash out, they are not collected. But as far as cash out so far, there's been $300,000. I put some notes at the bottom of some points of interest, and we can dive into more of this at a later time if you're interested in hearing. So for every dollar the city's putting in, we're leveraging that with $36 from other investors. And then also, we're looking at the city investment per affordable unit, and we calculated right now at $25,000. If we get more units, that'll, of course, go down. And I looked at the city investments we've made previously, and the range that we've had, we've subsidized other affordable housing has been from $12,000 to $60,000. So we're well in that range, in the lower end, and if we actually have some additional units, it'll even go down a little bit more. Yeah.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So for the relocation site costs, it says purchase remediation short plaid for a portion of the King County Island. Is that $300,000? That seems low, if you.
So we purchased the entire 20 acres for $765,000, and so the portion of that for the 4.6 acres of the IC, the intensive commercial portion, is in that. The remediation is completely for this site, and so that's about $150,000. And then the short plaid, we're still kind of totaling that up. So I want to say that's probably $10,000, $15,000. So what seems, what seems missing from there? Okay. Okay. Any other questions about our investments to date? Okay.
Nope.
So why are we here? So we have, as Hal has mentioned, as the more we move along, the more we learn. When, we discovered a funding gap in the actual entire project. When we did the RFP, we asked respondents to use a plug figure of $3 million for a cost to build a new facility for CenturyLink. We did not want each respondent to have a different amount, a different assumption as they, as we're trying to compare proposals. We use that, we got that estimate because we were provided the model of what CenturyLink is currently building in other parts of the country. For instance, the one we received was from Arizona. It's about a 7,000-square-foot office and locker rooms, and all the cars were parked outside. As we moved forward and we looked at what had, started to have a conversation with CenturyLink, they're interested in having what they have here currently at their site. So currently at their site, they have a 35,000-square-foot building where they have office space of about 4,500 square feet, and then have over 70 parking spaces interior to their building to park their work vehicles and their personal vehicles during the day. We plan to have, continue to have some conversation with CenturyLink about if that's possible. Hal has gone around and looked at other CenturyLink sites throughout the region, and none of them have the full interior parking of other vehicles. So we believe there's some leeway in negotiating with them about that. But for now, this has, this change has resulted in a funding gap of $4 million in the proforma. And we have worked with the developer in many different ways to address the funding gap. So as Hal mentioned, you know, he's redesigned the building three times, trying to find ways to maintain the amenities but to reduce the cost. And we also needed to gather more information about what we needed. So tonight, we're going to address two of those five RFP requirements of how we started to address that. And I'll address the second one first. So in the RFP, we requested a 2,000-square-foot residential assisted living shell. And as we started working more with our development team, King County Housing Authority mentioned that there is a source from the state that was coming available that would actually be an appropriate funding source for this, and they agreed to take the lead to apply for that with our assistance, but to apply for that funding and actually incorporate that, those living units into their building in a more cohesive fashion. So that reduced the gap by about $1 million if we get that funding. The other piece that we're going to address, and then we're here to talk to tonight, is the original requirement was a 10,000-square-foot ground-floor commercial shell space for nonprofit services. So before, again, I mentioned we gathered more information. We had this idea in 2016 that we needed some additional space for nonprofit services, but we didn't know if nonprofits that were wanted, that were currently in the community or wanted to be in the community could actually pay for those space and how much that would be. So we did an RFP, which we're going to talk about tonight, to better understand what the interests and also the ability for tenants to pay for this. Because, again, we understood that there's going to be some additional costs for this space, or we want to make sure we covered our costs for this space. And so we were pleasantly surprised, we had, and David will talk more about the RFP responses, but we had needed to gather that information so that we could come to an understanding that there was desire for 10,000 square feet. So obviously, if there wasn't, then we would be having a different conversation. Any questions to this point? Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. So tonight, we're going to be discussing three options. And I wanted to make it clear that the options that you see here are for the unfinished shell. And so we know that there will be tenant improvement costs. And after receiving direction from the council on which user, type of use and size, we will work with the nonprofit to better define what that contribution and that sharing of cost is for the tenant improvements. We always intended that that would be a shared cost or potentially full cost for the tenants. We don't have that exact figure for tonight, but what we need to, again, get direction on is what the city is willing to do for these different options. So the three options tonight are to maintain the 10,000-square-foot, again, to look at for the nonprofit service providers to be provided. So that's the original proposal, if it's just going to be a commercial use. Through our RFP process, we did identify a user that isn't very interested, and that's the medical use, and that's a $2.8 million gap. The difference between the 2.3 and 2.8 is the additional infrastructure that was required for a medical user. And then the third option is to reduce to 3,000 square foot plus 1,000 square feet of shared space. And we do have some interest from a nonprofit for that, and we'd have to identify other services to co-locate with them. And there's no additional cost for the shell, but there would be potentially for the tenant improvements.
What's, when you say 3,000 square feet plus 1,000 square, 1,000 square feet of shared space?
Yeah.
What's the shared space?
Yeah. So one of the, one of the concepts, and this is, again, isn't said in stone either, is one of the concepts that we heard in the, in the application, or the RFP interviews, was a desire to have meeting space that's a little larger for, for the nonprofits to utilize. And so Hal, in working and talking to his other tenants, recognized that the kidney center also needed a space where it'd be a teaching kitchen, have a space for meetings and such. So the way it's designed at this moment is that's the shared with the other users on, you know, on the site. So, again, that's not solidified or decision's been made, but that's the proposal as now.
Thanks.
Yep. So, again, tonight, we are hoping that we will receive some direction from the four of you regarding the type of nonprofit service, service, and also the acceptable investment. David is going to dive into a little more details with the Opportunity Center, that process and the details. Any questions for me before I? Yep.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On the last slide, the, so reducing to 3,000 plus the 1,000 shared, so that's a difference of 7,000 square feet between option two and three. And so would that be, what would be the plan for that 7,000? Would it be another commercial?
Oh, meaning if the Opportunity Center was not, was not built to the 4,000, what the other 7,000 would be? So the layout will be different, and you'll see that on the slides. And the, so there's a lot of different changes. So like, the parking that we required for that then would be reallocated or not needed to be found in other locations. I don't know if there's other aspects, but the layout would be a different format there. Yeah.
Can I ask City Administrator Moon, regardless of what the money goes for, in other words, which of these options we feel has community value and how much, the most expensive is $2.8 million. Do we have an idea how we would fund that if we moved forward with that option?
Yeah, I think Jen has actually had some discussion with the Finance Director, and Finance Director feels fairly confident that there are a couple of different ways that we could go about providing that amount. And do you want to elaborate?
Yeah. So there are some end-of-fund balance options. There's also looking at bonding. We have the capacity to bond. And one of the things with this Opportunity Center investment is that you will be receiving annual rent or lease income, so that, at this moment, we believe that that would cover the bond payments and/or, you know, pay into future opportunities. And I think there's a larger discussion that's going to be happening in council about investment of city dollars, but this one.
Okay. One more thing before we move on. So there's bonding, there's ending fund balances, and there's also other funds, right? Like, I'm thinking specifically of the $965,000 that we have in the Human Services Fund that came from Talis that we have not spent yet. That would be neither bonds nor ending fund balance. Are there other, is there other coins in the cushions that we can look for?
You've identified the three primary sources that we have also talked about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. The 2.3 and 2.8, funding required for unfinished shell, is that the, tell me more about, is that the city's portion, or is that, would the tenant be paying for some of the improvements or?
So the unfinished shell would be the city's commitment if we're going to maintain ownership, if we would look at potentially future leased-own options, and that would obviously be covered through that. But the tenant improvement, so the shell is going to give you the concrete cement look, you know, of a build-out with stubs for plumbing and other things, electricity. But the tenant improvements to actually build out the space, walls and other things, carpet, that's the, that's the piece that we would then, after direction received from the council, go and negotiate that next step.
So the funding required for unfinished shell, the difference between the three, is it, what is required to be in the 10,000-square-foot spaces to the unfinished degree? It's just more costly? Why is there no, I mean, if it's all?
Oh, it's the funding gap that we, partially the funding gap that we identified earlier with the difference in costs. So when they created their proforma, they assumed one thing, and we now found that that's a more costly thing. So in order to still provide the 10,000-square-foot, there needs to be So in order to still provide the 10,000-square-foot, there needs to be an investment to bring that gap down. And we, again, reduced that gap from $4 million to these figures here before tonight.
I'm sure I understand that. You identified a $4 million gap?
Yes.
So where does the two-plus million fit in?
So we worked other ways to reduce the funding gap. So one of those ways was for King County to find funding for one of our requirements, so that reduced it about $2 million. The other way, we did some adjustments to the design. We also are not paying for our portion, each of these owners, quote-unquote, we would be an owner of this site, are going to be condominium owners. We actually reduced the land value of that. They were kind enough to say, oh, you know what, this, we don't need to charge you the land portion of this. So there's been some give and take with the developer that we've already had to get it down to $2.3 million for the 10,000-square-feet, or if we wanted to do the medical user, it's 2.8 because of the additional infrastructure that needed to be installed prior to the tenant improvements. So we're not asking for the full four. We did some work to get it down, and now we're here to say, are you willing and interested in investing in one of these options?
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So I think that what would be really helpful for the next meeting for me would be a table with this information, with the gap. And then you identified the 1 million for the assisted living space, and then you have these other options that will close the gap and what would be needed. So I think that in a table form, that would be really helpful and just show how it adds up. And then you can also put in the additional information that you just shared about how that gap has closed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right.
Okay, we're going to get to details. David?
Thank you. David Fujimo, Director of the Office of Sustainability. And we'll return to those slides again at the end of this. Really, again, just to kind of reinforce, we're essentially problem-solving for that gap. So the original RFP originally had stated a 10,000-square-foot space for nonprofit services. We discovered a number of things as we progressed through kind of the discovery process, understanding site conditions and a variety of different parameters, understanding differences in costs. And so that's what has led us to this gap that we're trying to achieve. So rewinding just a little bit and talking about the Opportunity Center, the whole next, or the whole origination for the Opportunity Center as a part of the overall CenturyLink TOD project was to find innovative ways to help address community needs by providing nonprofit services in our community. You know, one of the most significant barriers that we've identified to providing services locally has really been the affordability of facilities and the high cost of land that we're finding in Issaquah. This has some roots back to a former project, which was the Human Services Campus. There was some work done by a community group that was working together with the Together Center out of Redmond. They were looking at benefits of a co-located human services-type model. They showed the importance of low-market rents to being able to make that feasible. And they identified a range of services that they felt were needed in the community. This project is not attempting to replicate that, but it is drawing from pieces of that as well as some work done on a community needs assessment, which is more recent and speaks more specifically to human services needs. But ultimately, the purpose of the Opportunity Center is to, as it says here, to expand services locally or to enhance them. We were really looking at this as an opportunity to increase the services to the community, not just relocate existing services. We wanted to try and address some of those needs that were identified in the community needs assessment. And also with that, reducing some of those service access issues. There were a number of those that were identified through the community needs assessment, transportation being primary, also some system navigation-related issues, culturally relevant services, things like that. As Jen had mentioned, in order to help us get more information about potential tenants and what their criteria would be, we developed a request for proposals back in the fall of last year. Leading up to that work, we actually did some work, kind of some pre-planning and investigative work so that we would have a better sense of what to look for out in the communities. So we did some interviews with some human services agencies. We talked with our Human Services Commission. We did a survey of a number of agencies that are operating in the region to get a sense of what their plans were, what were the needs they were seeing, what services they were providing in Issaquah. And we heard back a range of things. We heard that everything from, we just need a space for staff to be able to locate and kind of hotel when they're here in Issaquah, all the way up to interest in citing a satellite location, relocating a main office, or providing additional new services in our community. So we heard a range of services, something from very small to much more kind of robust options. So this helped us to identify a variety of kind of types of services and types of spaces that could be located. So this was also office space, classrooms, training centers, a range of kind of medical service providers, counseling services, and things like that. We let this request for proposal in the fall, and we received four proposals, which you'll see here. The first was kind of this consortium involving At Work with Encompass, Life Enrichment Options, Tabon Learning Center, and Friends of Youth. And they came together with a kind of overall joint proposal primarily focused on services for youth and young adults with developmental disabilities. It also included some pediatric therapy for children with developmental delays, and then some youth behavioral services and homeless outreach services primarily through Friends of Youth. For this proposal, all but Encompass currently have operations in Issaquah. Encompass operates out of North Bend, so this would be kind of an extension or potentially relocation of services in the case of At Work and Tabon elsewhere within the community. They had requested a full 10,000-square-feet for, as a part of their proposal. As a part of the process of working with them, it became clear that they're still developing some site concepts for this use. They were discussing issues like a retail space, a coffee shop, potentially having a commercial kitchen on-site, a little bit of lack of clarity on leasing requirements, and kind of a very low range for dollars-per-square-foot interest and ability to provide for lease. The next one was an organization called ICRON. They're a smaller behavioral health provider. They have locations currently in Bellevue and Seattle, no current locations in Issaquah. This came in as a singular proposal. They were looking for about 1,200 to 2,500 square feet. They provide outpatient mental health services, psychiatric medication management, care coordination, some employment services for youth and adults, and young adults as well. And they're a smaller organization. I think their total financial annual budget is on the order of $2.2 million versus that first group, which is more close, or closer to about $24 million per year combined. So they had pretty limited capacity for tenant improvements and really needed to have kind of some pre-furnished spaces in order to expand their operations locally into Issaquah. The next one was a combination of Valley Cities and Health Point. They currently operate in multiple locations in the South County as well as Redmond locations, Renton as well. They don't currently have an Issaquah location but are serving Issaquah residents. And they had requested a full 10,000-square-feet as part of their proposal process. Valley Cities, as was noted previously, provides for behavioral health services, so both mental health services as well as substance use disorder-related services. And Health Point provides comprehensive medical and dental services. Both of these agencies provide services to primarily low-income households. About 93% of clients for Valley Cities make less than $17,000 per year, and about 96% of clients for Health Point are around or below 200% of the poverty level, which is about, I believe it's around $24,000 per year. So definitely low-income spectrum of the communities. What's interesting about their proposal is the Medicaid system, Medicare system is definitely moving to an integrative care system where they're integrating both behavioral and physical health services, all under one roof, kind of a whole-body care approach. And they're actually ahead of the game. So they've actually started to do this work, and they have partnerships in providing that kind of approach with their facilities and working together. Financially, these organizations are much more significant. They're on the order of about $138 million operating revenue or budget on an annual basis. They are able to pay for leasing arrangements and can participate in tenant improvements. The last one is Hope Link. Hope Link is also a fairly large organization. They have about 14 service locations in the King County area. They don't have a current Issaquah location. They were looking for a smaller footprint for their operations. Typically, they operate both a food bank and then some stability services that go along with it. Because Issaquah has a food bank, they wouldn't choose to cite that kind of a facility here, but they would work in partnership with an organization like the food bank. So they were looking at maybe about 1,400 to, I think, up to 1,800 square feet. So again, a smaller footprint, mostly kind of counseling services, some training spaces, areas like that. And as I mentioned before, providing for financial resilience, energy assistance, family development, employment services, and adult education. Organizationally, they're at about $62 million in terms of a total budget. So as a part of the review of these proposals, we took a look at several different things. We looked at service need and delivery, shared and supportive functions. This kind of goes back to that idea that we heard that some of the nonprofits wanted to work together and potentially share spaces. Some smaller organizations such as was proposed in that first consortium could band together and provide some services. We also looked at alignment with the overall TOD project site to make sure that there were compatible uses and that there were some opportunities for actually leveraging services. We looked at the organizational capacity and also alignment, and whether or not the organizations who were proposing had Issaquah on their radar, or whether this was just an opportunistic kind of shot in the dark. So we looked at that. We also considered whether it advanced equity and sustainability and economic vitality as part of their proposals as well, and then any special needs that they might have because of their specific site or service requirements. And we also, when we're reviewing these proposals, we included staff from the city's mayor's office. We had Economic Development, Office of Sustainability involved in that work. Both Spectrum and King County Housing Authority sat in on the interviews. And then we had a representative from the East Side Human Services Forum, as well as our chair from the Human Services Commission, sit in on those interviews. As a part of that work, the city administration identified Health Point and Valley Cities as a leading proposal. Because they expand services to the community, they're new services, they're not currently provided within our community. It was addressing a priority service need that we had identified in the community needs assessment, and it improved access by bringing a service to Issaquah. So that was really addressing if low-income households aren't able to find service, health services locally, they really have to go outside of our community. We know that transportation is a significant barrier, so bringing that service to the community was seen as a positive benefit. And then also, we identified that they have, you know, a strong financial position and the ability to pay for lease. So going into a few of the options, as Jen had noted before, we've really laid out three different options. Operating from the premise that within the original RFP, for the project as a whole, for the TOD site, it had come out with a goal of 10,000 square feet of unfinished space. So this first option really keeps with that approach and says, okay, so if we were to maintain that goal of 10,000 square feet, what would be required for investment to address that gap that's been identified? Excuse me. And so that's really this 2.3 million in investment for the shell. We did see some services, we just received two proposals that were interested in the full 10,000-square-feet. One was the At Work Consortium, and the other was the Health Point, which we'll talk about as the next option as well. And then as we just spoke about, in terms of financially, the city does have some options for how we would approach this. We can put forth essentially cash towards a project. We do have the ability to finance, and talking to our Finance Director, Jen Olson, we don't have a limitation on our bonding capacity. It's really a cash flow question, so that's not a consideration. So in a way, it's a little bit of a different equation because we do have the potential for gaining revenue as a result of this project. So it is more feasible from that standpoint, likely also commercially viable from that capacity. Simple payback on some of those investments would be on the range of 10 to 12 years. Let's see. So that's option one. Option two, this is really where, with getting more specifics as a result of the RFP process, we understand for medical and dental services provided on-site, there's different infrastructure requirements. This in part relates to the construction practice or construction methods that are necessary in order to provide for the additional plumbing, ventilation, and other requirements. And so that does add about $500,000 to the cost for the core and shell to be developed at this option. And it also require, yes, some more specialized planning for that build-out and of that ventilation. And because of their, the interest in this, in working with that partner, there is some potential interest in long-term ownership. That's, so that's something that we can also consider as well, whether they can make some investments over time, or potentially in a lease-to-own arrangement. And one of the pieces that's still to be sorted out with this option is considering the parking requirements and what needs will be necessary on-site as well as through some of the adjacent sites in order to make sure that we have sufficient parking to make, to meet the demands of this service. And as I mentioned before, Health Point has indicated an interest in and ability to contribute to tenant improvements. The third option was pursuing an avenue where instead of maintaining the square footage allowance, was more focused on the part about providing space to the city at no cost, which was a secondary requirement for, or an additional requirement for the Opportunity Center, part of the TOD RFP. And so this was the result of some problem-solving and part of the developer to figure out, how could we make that work? It does result in a reduced footprint, about 3,000 square feet plus this 1,000-square-feet of shared spaces. This does change the dynamic on the user types that we can accommodate in this space. Most likely, the strongest candidate would be something like a Hope Link, which can provide for some of these financial stability services and employment services. We do know that they wouldn't necessarily want that full space, so we would need to either work with them to think about how they might be able to provide for some management, some additional space, and allow other nonprofit users to use it, or potentially find a secondary So back to this chart. As we've talked through, there are some key pieces about size and services and cost. Really, some of those issues about size do tie to some of the services and the ability to meet certain services. The 10,000-square-foot space without an identified tenant, at least at this point in time, is potentially the highest risk because we don't have a guaranteed revenue stream that would, or certainly we don't have a guarantee, but we don't have an identified revenue stream or partner, as at least as a result of our process to date, that could use that space. For the 10,000-square-feet linked to a healthcare provider, it's primarily an investment risk. It's a question of having potentially a strong known partner financially who can provide for some resources to contribute to the project. But there are some additional costs for build-out, and there are some additional requirements for the city in terms of its property management responsibilities. The city, yes?
Sorry, on the first option, didn't you say At Work was potentially, what was the issue with At Work's suggestion of using all 10,000?
Oh, thank you. So At Work was requesting the full 10,000-square-feet. One of the concerns was that their plan for the use of the space was not fully fleshed out, and that's something that did come out in the interviews and through some follow-up conversations with them. We were concerned about what the structure of that arrangement would look like. Thank you. And also, since that time, Encompass has also identified an alternative location for their services in the community. So we're not, we don't believe that, at least in that prior configuration is a sound option.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. So, and then, so the 10,000-square-feet for the healthcare provider, good financial, strong financial partner can contribute, additional costs for build-out, some additional responsibilities in terms of city property management. We do provide that capacity on other city properties. This is maybe a little bit of a different equation. But at the same time, it may be the best option for bringing these types of services to our community. Yes?
David, can you just speak to those additional city property management considerations?
Sure. And I'll ask Emily to join in here as well. So the city does provide for property management responsibilities on a number of sites, both on facilities that we own as well as ones that on facilities that we own, as well as ones that we lease to tenants. And there's a variety of different flavors of that, if you will. We do provide leases to nonprofit organizations such as At Work or to the Food and Clothing Bank. We also have some commercial spaces that we lease. This is a newer property that will have some higher financial obligations associated with it, and it just would need to make sure that we've got the capacity to provide oversight on that. Sorry.
So we'd be the landlord?
We'd be the landlord, and so we would just need to work out, what does that mean? We'd have to work out a particular deal, you know, which, which are tenant requirements and which are the landlord requirements?
Great, thanks.
I can shed some light on that. The Opportunity Center, regardless of the size, will be, you know, a small piece of the big project, and we will have a property manager onsite, and each tenant will pay for their proportionate share of the sidewalk sweeping and the mechanical equipment maintenance. And those are things that we will want to control as the landlord of the overall project with the shared, you know, with the insurance. So I would, for resources of the city, I think it would have a much diminished strain on your resources because that property management really wants to be handled by one firm for the entire project, not broken up with a bunch of different property managers, you know, doing each little space.
And then continuing to that third option, the reduced space at 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, probably the lowest risk, no additional financial investment on the city's part. As was discussed before, there's potential for tenant improvements. There is a known partner, potential partner with a strong financial position, but a different variety of services that could be operated out of that space. Additional partner or use of that space would need to be identified. And there, I guess, so there's some unknowns about that, those services that would be provided. The other piece to that is, we do also know that Hope Link has a strong interest in coming to Issaquah. They've identified a service location in their strategic plan. They have been actively pursuing locations in Issaquah, and in fact, had identified a previous, a different site in Issaquah that didn't pan out. So there is a chance that they will be able to find some location in Issaquah through that avenues or other avenues as well. So with that, did you want to wrap up, or do you want to take additional questions at this point?
I think we can keep going.
Well, I think it's time for discussion.
So we, I think the remaining slides are just on, in terms of next steps, in terms of overall schedule and future topics. So I think in terms of kind of those questions about the different options, those are really the areas where we're seeking some feedback.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'd be interested in seeing the next slides, next steps.
Okay.
Okay. So on the, we actually blew up this area of the timeline. So the next council actions, again, we're hoping to come back on June 4th with the Opportunity Center resolution, which would commit to the development team that we are interested in pursuing X amount of square foot with X amount of funding investment. And then we, the next point that the council will be able to make a decision is the process of the development agreement negotiations and approval, which we anticipate between July and September. We will also plan to, there's, again, there's some steps in here that, that the development team need to do, such as, you can see there in June, going and getting a HUD preliminary loan application approval, which then allows us to proceed with a community meeting in July, and then also a second one in September we're looking at. We will look at those community beings to get input regarding how to activate the public spaces, looking at the public plaza, looking at the mid-block crossing and the street frontage, making sure that those are welcoming and vibrant like we all want to see in our central Issaquah area. And then during the development agreements, there's actually two development agreements, one regarding the project site, which is between King County, Spectrum, and the city, and then one regarding the relocation site, which is between Spectrum, the city, and Century Link. So again, those two are connected but separate as far as the locations. So we'll be here, in front of council multiple times, talking about the drafts and negotiations there. And that, just so you reminder, that will actually be a legally binding contract with explicit numbers spelling out roles, responsibilities, investments. So again, a lot of the things we've done to this point will be reflected in the development agreement. And then between now and the development agreement time, we will continue to refine the numbers that we will come back with and have in the development agreement details. Any questions about those next steps?
Yes, Councilmember Ray.
I don't know if it's next steps, but I have a question. So at some point, and I don't know if it's the development agreement or when, when do we reach an agreement with Spectrum? Spectrum?
Yes.
And say, okay, this is, this is the cost?
Yep. Yep. For, for the Opportunity Center, for the entire project?
Whole thing.
Development agreement. Yep. So there'll be multiple pieces. So, and in that, there, you know, we will say what we commit to, and he will, the, the development team will say what they commit to. So that will be this many units, this, you know, again, providing all the pieces of the puzzle. And again, it's a legally binding document at that point.
And at that point, we nail down exactly what the city's contribution to the adventure is?
Yes, in total, yes. So the June 4th, again, the resolution, we need, so we need to know what our Opportunity Center investment appetite is prior to the development agreement because there are design that needs to move forward, we need to have those conversations with Century Link and et cetera. So, I'm sorry? And HUD application. So they, the HUD application, they're going to show the concept design, so those three pictures we showed you, they're going to show that, they're going to discuss what, how that layout is, and, you know, talk about the strength of the partners, et cetera. So they can't go there with three or two options, you know, HUD will just say, come back when you're ready. And that's actually a new step since, since they've applied for the RFP. So again, things change in all parts of our world here. Yeah. And just so you know, there's currently a TOD website. We're going to have the TOD as, on the active projects list, so that people can kind of follow it that way. And on the TOD website, it talks about the presentations, you know, that we've already made in council, so people can become more aware of that. Yes?
Isn't there three potential check writing opportunities? One is the development agreement, the first development agreement, right? But there is potentially on the second, depending on how the second goes. And then isn't there a third based on, depending on tenant improvements?
True. So what we hope to do is between now, well, June 4th, and the development agreement time is to get a letter of interest or intent with whoever we decide to lease with. Now, depending on which option we choose, we may be able to move faster or slower according to that. And then we would be able to bring forward what that additional cost is. But again, there may be some range versus an exact dollar amount, depending on how far we get with those negotiations. But the intention is to be able to lay that out. Thank you for pointing that out. And so the two development agreements come together through council. So it won't be one and then the other, because again, they are interrelated as far as with the land transaction. So there's just not a need for King County Housing Authority to be involved in the Century Link site and vice versa.
Got it. Other questions before we move to the last slide?
And so the last slide is just, when we talk to council members and others, we just want to make sure that, we know that, again, the TOD project has multiple topics, and we didn't want to lose these. These are some of the things that were mentioned in those briefings, so we want to make sure that we address at a later time. And if there's additional points that you'd like us to address, whether it's through the community meeting or in a future briefing, we want to make sure we do that. But so this is a list, making sure the two buildings feel as one. I think that's one of the, the points of the strength of Spectrum's proposals, that they are going to have one property management firm, they want it to look the same on the outside. And how can we, how can, they're really interested in making this a community versus one building versus the other. And then looking at the parking needs, investment per affordable unit, we'll, we'll refine and design in mid-block crossing and the plaza. So those are things that, again, we'll be talking about more later, but we really tonight need to get back at direction from the four of you about your desire for the Opportunity Center.
Thank you. Any other material that you wanted to present before we discuss this?
I don't believe so. Anybody from? No.
So if it's okay with my fellow council members, I would like to take public comment before we discuss this. I'm getting general agreement. So I'm going to offer, if anybody in the community wishes to speak to this issue, I would be happy to extend them three minutes. Ms. Marsh?
So I'm up here again, saying there has been absolutely no public vetting of this. This is a lot of money. No one has ever asked the community how they want the money spent or if they want it spent on this. Every time I ask the question, it's like, oh, it was part of our public needs assessment. I'm sorry. We have transportation issues, we have lands we want to purchase, people cannot even stay in their own homes, yet you cannot be bothered to go out to your community to ask them if they want to spend money on someone else moving into town and have them giving, giving them a cheap house. Ooh, I'm choking up like Mary. I don't know how many times I need to come to the microphone and say, this is a community decision. This is not a, well, you know, when we come back, we're going to see if the public plaza is okay within this thing that we've already said yes to. You've done it before. It doesn't come out well. It pisses the community off, sorry, language. And then when you ask us for things, we won't give it to you because you've basically funneled us in a direction and never asked if it's our town and our money. So this is one of those things that is making me so grumpy that I will activate on it, and you don't want me to activate on something I actually like, which is transit-oriented development. Do the process right, don't avoid us, and see if the community is willing to support what y'all seem to want so much. One last thing, staff presentations should be even-handed, there should be no pom-poms. It should just be the facts. And yet again, the pom-poms are out, and that is, it's our town. So my three minutes are probably up, and think about us, because we pay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue this evening? Anyone else? Going twice? Going three times? All right, thanks. So, and of course, the four of us are here. Council is lucky enough to have three former chairs of the city's Human Services Commission. Those are the three council members who are not here this evening, but we will soldier on as best we can. Councilmember Hunt?
I'm going to start with a few questions, actually, if that's okay. So this, the first one is not maybe something that you can answer today, but it's something that I would really like to know before I make a decision in June, and that's about the, the transit-oriented use of these different, how, how the proposed uses mesh with transit-oriented use. So if there is any information that could be provided about Health, Health Point and Valley Cities in terms of the needs of those people to use the transit versus the Hope Link and versus the At Work, because I think that that's important. One thing that's really important here is that we're combining multiple needs of the community in terms of, we do have a need for health, but we also have a need for transit connections. And so potentially, if we can make the synergy happen there, I think that's important. And I don't personally know how that works out. So that, if there's information out there to help me with that, that would be much appreciated. If it can be answered today, then that's great, but if not, then by the next meeting.
We will, a request from Health Point and Valley Cities about their current, who they're currently serving. One of the unknowns is they're not currently here in Issaquah, so they don't know how many people would live in Issaquah, or would come to Issaquah versus, you know, going to Renton or Bellevue or another location, but we can get some of that data, the data about their current usage.
Right. And I think more than, more than just how far do they come, it's more, my question is more, how likely are they going to be to use the bus system? And then also, so for, for future topics, there is a question in here. For future topics, there's the integration of separate buildings to feel as function as one, and I, I see that there is a configuration change of the buildings when, depending on which option, and I think basically whatever use goes into this space will affect not only how the, the community that comes and uses the space, but also will affect how the community that lives in the other part of the building, it will affect the functionality of the building potentially. And the most obvious is, I think, that it changes the footprint of the building. And so I wondered if you could speak at all to how the different options might affect the people that are living in the building and the function of the building for them.
As far as the residents of the building, there, there isn't a significant difference in how, one option versus the other. If you notice, the big difference between the two really has to do with the location of, obviously, the kidney center and the daycare. And with the daycare located in this configuration, their entire play area is down on the ground floor. It has to be fenced off by their licensing requirements. And in this situation, only the, the smaller kids, the toddlers, have their play area down there, and the play area for the rest of the kids is up on the, are up on the deck with the residents above, which works for the daycare facility. So that's one of the major impacts to the tenant of the building, that for the daycare, they prefer it down on ground, but they've done it the other way as well. The kidney center, you know, they, they, I think, liked the other location better because they have the visibility from Maple Street. We just felt it was better for the Community Health Center, if they're going to be part of the project, to have that visibility. And the kidney center does benefit from the more, you can't stop and drop somebody off on Maple Street. It's a really busy street with no load unload. In our new street, you'll be able to do that, and the kidney center patients come by Uber and by other vehicles where they need a little more time to get out of their car. So this kind of works for them in this configuration. But for the residents themselves, we're achieving that kind of integrated community by, as I've said before, having that shared common space. We're going to have one fitness room, one front door, one package room, where the residents will go to that regardless of which building they're in, one community room, kind of kitchen area where they go, so that we really try to get that integration amongst the residents. And that's really not affected by, you know, where, how big the Opportunity Center is or where it's located. That, that happens either way.
And then lastly, related to transit, but the parking differences for the different options and how that would be addressed?
So our code currently requires two spaces per 1,000 square feet, so depending on the size, would depend on how many spaces were allocated for the, so that's what the code requires versus what the use requires or believes they will require. So we have some discussions with Health Point and Valley Cities about their need for between 40 and 60 spaces total. So some of those are employees and some of those are for, you know, patients. And so we have started conversations and looking at a couple of different options, looking at on-street parking potentially, looking at the Metro Overflow Park, park-and-ride lot across the street, so by next to the skate park. It's a shared use with the park, the Tibbetts Valley Park right now, looking to see if there's some, some opportunities to have a few spaces there allocated. So we know we're not going to be able to find, you know, another 20 or so spaces in one location, but we know that we can find some other spots. So that's something that staff will be working on again if we move forward with that. The other thing is, we don't know, is how, how, again, how, what the use of transit exactly will be for their, their employees. So this may reduce the need for, for parking where other locations are not next to a transit center, right? We also don't know over time if, how parking usage and transit usage will require this or allow this to need less parking spaces. So that's the hope, obviously, being next to a transit center.
Anybody else? Well, while you're thinking, so I, I love Hope Link, truth be told. Our, my company has a longstanding relationship with Hope Link. I actually do, I'm a crier for our auction every year that we do to benefit Hope Link, and I have actually sung Sinatra as a fundraiser. I sang "The Way You Look Tonight," and it's, when I was, I was running for that other office, we tried to scrub it off the internet. office, we tried to scrub it off the Internet, which you can probably find it, you can probably find it someplace on the Internet. But having said that, this community has talked about a human services campus for a very long time. And one of the reasons why we don't have one today is because it was seen that health and dental was an absolute cornerstone to what we would want to do. And of the original plans that came through, none of them were able at the time to bring forward a health and dental program, and it was just seen as absolutely essential. So I think this is a huge public benefit for our community, if it would be, if we were able to bring it in. And so speaking as one of seven, one of four today, but one of seven, I would be interested in seeing the option two going forward when we reconvene in June. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Well, I, I think this is potentially just a fantastic project. And it's very, very exciting. It's been very, very exciting all along. We are, this summer, as I recall, coming upon two years that there have been conversations about this at the administration level, staff level, and at the council level. And so I know that there's been a lot of planning that's going on, a lot of work, and I know there's a lot of excitement around it, and I'm just as excited as everybody else. However, I, I agree with and am bothered by the amount of time that's gone by when we haven't been out in the community. And the last understanding was that we would go out to the community starting in January. And the notion that we would make a significant decision and then not go out to the community until July, and then have the engagement be around how to activate public spaces, doesn't feel right to me. So at this point in time, I would be leaning towards no additional cost, because I really think we ought to be before the community first, before we make that kind of a decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
So I'm, I'm going to generally align with Councilman, Councilmember Goodman. It's a lot of money. There's a lot of moving parts. I don't think that we really understand what it is. There seems to be a lot of risk to me associated with it. And I wish I could articulate exactly why I'm uncomfortable, and I will work through that between now and the end of this week and share that with you. But my intuition is telling me that there's something here that doesn't feel right with me. And so I'm a little bit apprehensive, and I will, I will get my thoughts together on that and share them with you between now and the end of the week.
May I ask a question about the risk you perceive for this, so I can understand that?
There's a ton of uncertainty and, you know, self-admittedly, between, about what it's going to look like, you know, where we're going to get there, what's it going to cost, what are the operating costs going to be long-term? There's still a lot of questions that I hear in the presentation.
Here's Councilmember Hunt.
So I, I think, like Councilmember Goodman, I think this is a very exciting and very important project. I think it will be one of, an example for the region. And my, my biggest question remains how these different uses will meld with the transit-oriented nature of this development. Because I think this, this is an effort to get away from using automobiles to get around everywhere. And I think potentially, we could align the use of the commercial space and the nonprofit with the, with transit. And that should be, I think, really good for the community. And I would think it would also be good for the people that live in that building to have a use that aligns with the transit. And so for that reason, I am not sure that I really understand the, the difference between the different uses in terms of that transit use, and we would want to know more about that. And I think that we have, we have heard from the Office of Sustainability that both dental health and, and medical health, and as well as employment services and other nonprofit services, these are all needs in the community. And so I think there's, I think that there are multiple options that make sense. And then I'm interested to hear how those options align with the transit.
Any other comments before we close this? Does staff request any other information from us? Nope. All right. With that, we will move on to ID 0273, Status Update on City Parcel with Issaquah School District Interest. This will be Keith Niven before us, and I see some of our school district friends are with us as well.
Good evening, City Council. Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development and Development Services. And so, last time we talked about this was at a joint city council, school board meeting. And we talked about the process that we were going to go through to talk about this piece of property and potential surplus of this piece of property. And so where we are right now is, we're at the second council work session on May 14th. And this evening, we're going to update you on where we are on the issues that have been identified. So following this meeting that we had in April, we asked the city council to identify the topics and the issues that they would like some further information on. And so what came out of that was critical areas and geology, traffic issues. We talked about trees and views. And so those were really the topical issues that the council felt like they wanted the school district and staff to provide some more information on, to help inform whether or not the city council would be willing to potentially sell this piece of property for a potential elementary school. So, and going back to the process slide that was the previous one to this one, we discussed that this topic would both go to land and shore in June and to the Services Committee in June. And we talked about whether or not we even needed this second work session. And Councilmember Ramos, who didn't sit on either of those two committees, said, "Yes, we should have this discussion this evening." So this is for Bill. So what I would like to start with, and I apologize for not getting this to you in advance, is the first thing that we've accomplished since the last time we talked about this is we identified, we got a topographic survey, I'm really loud. We got a topographic survey done of where the 40% slopes are. And so I have copies here, additional copies for the community. So what this shows, not very well on the slide, I apologize for that, but where you can see on your map is where the 40% slopes start along the property, both to the north and to the west. And that will, that, those are the entirety, so we had this surveyed, so those topographic lines were actually surveyed by a surveyor. So those are accurate. And so internal to the property, and this was one of the questions that Councilmember Hunt asked, I believe, last time, was, were there steep slopes internal to the property? And the answer, based on this topographic survey, is there or not? So the second piece, and I'm going to invite Steve Crawford from the school district to come up and share what the school district has put together. The second piece is geotechnical information about the property. And the school district has done some borings on the property since we had our last meeting. And I think, even though there's not written information to share, I think that Mr. Crawford can talk about what they know in terms of geology. Come on up, Steve. I'm not doing this by myself.
Steve Crawford, welcome.
Steve Crawford, Issaquah School District, Director of Capital Projects. So initial soils, geotech investigation work was done with basically on the top of the hill.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could, if you guys are, thanks. Sorry. Continue.
With backhoe trenches. Those went to a depth of about 10 to 12 feet and indicated the type of soil that you'd typically find in glacial moraine areas. There was some concern on the part of the geotech engineer in their evaluation of the steep slope areas, in that there was some presence of some landslide areas to the northwest. There was an outcropping of a denser material down towards the toe of the slope. That to them raised some questions about slope stability. The upper part that you could ascertain the soil composition from the backhoe testing was a moderate to loosely compacted material. And the presence of the denser material towards the toe of the slope indicated a concern to them that, that there was instability and a severe seismic event. And so they requested that we drill some deeper holes so that they can get a much better picture of what underlies the upper materials. So that work was completed last Friday, so I don't have a geotechnical report at this time. But the verbal report was that all three of those borings indicated that the less dense material stopped at a depth of about 30 feet, and then it was solid, hard, dense material below that. And as they said, it's alleviated their concerns with regards to slope stability. So there is a softer material at the top to deal with, but overall, the site should stay just fine.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Goodman?
That's a good question. So Steve, you don't, there's not a report, written report, yet?
Not yet, but as soon as we have it, we'll forward it to you. They just finished the drilling Friday.
Thank you.
And what we had agreed to was that we would have Goldar and AMEC, who are the city's consultants, review that report when it comes in. So the, the council, when we asked for preferences on level of kind of due diligence, that we would do a double peer review on that information when it comes in. So that will be part of this next piece. And as soon as it comes in, we'll have, we'll send that off to Goldar and AMEC to do a peer, double peer review. So the next piece after, after geology was trees. So we've executed a contract with Tree Solutions Incorporated to go out and do a complete tree survey of the property, as well as to look at what the impact would potentially be for downslope trees, if trees were removed off the, off the potential top of the hill. That work, unfortunately, tree, arborists are really busy right now, so the best I could do was get them to go out in June. So I doubt they'll be ready for land and shore in June, maybe services in June, but we'll get that information to the council as soon as that becomes available. And the school district did have an arborist go up and look at trees, and I think Steve has some information about what they found to share this evening.
So the arborist's review of the tree and forest area is that the dead and obviously affected trees are impacted with laminated root rot. It's a disease that impacts fir trees, and the spores are typically present in glacial moraine soils. The trees, when stressed, are not able to resist that and get infected. It basically softens up the roots. The roots can't take the moisture. The trees exhibit the impact by dying from the top down. There's an area of about 17 trees towards the northwest corner of the parcel. There's another smaller stand about two-thirds of the way down the south, towards the south, off of the west edge of the property. In the center area of a depression, there's a number of trees that are impacted. And he also noted that there's obvious root rot impact to trees off of Highlands Drive and around to the south, above I-90 as well. So it's something that's become fairly prevalent in the area. When we did the clearing for Pine Lake Middle School, there were no trees that had any visible signs of impact, but an assessment of the roots after we pushed them over for the clearing for the building, about a third of them were impacted with root rot. So there are a couple of different ways you can deal with it. If you want to stop the spread of the root rot below ground, and it spreads whenever an infected tree root touches a healthy tree root, you clear and remove the stumps for a distance of 50 feet from the outermost apparently impacted tree. So that creates basically dead area that the root rot won't spread to trees further out. As he noted, that there are pockets of the root rot that'll probably continue to develop over the hillside, and there is no way to predict where or when that may occur. It generally takes one to two years for the impact to start to show at the top of the tree. So you don't know, looking at a stand of trees, whether they're impacted or not. You know, today, they could be, but it wouldn't show for maybe a year, maybe two years. But the likelihood is that it will continue to spread on the hillside. So that raises some interesting questions about how you go about dealing with it. Do you clear trees and replant with red alders or cedars that are not susceptible? Do you leave the dead trees in place? In part, you're dealing with, or in most parts, you're dealing with a tree area that's on a steep slope. So you have to deal with the potential impacts of removing trees on a dead slope and/or just letting them die and stand, which probably accelerates the spread. And replant as you see dead areas appear. So that has an impact on view. I think the reality is that any type of a solution would, if the district were to move forward on the property, would require a solution that involved the city, because the area of development is limited to a relatively small area. It's above and east of the steep sloped area, except in a couple little areas, one at the extreme far north and a little tiny area towards the south. But the majority of the steep sloped area and trees would still be on city property. And so you can't realistically develop a solution for one area without developing a solution for the rest of the slope.
So, so the good news on this topic is, because it is complicated, we're getting a second opinion, because our arborists will go out and look at the same trees in the same area. So, you know, the good news is we'll have at least two professional opinions on that.
Keith, there's, it seems like there's two potential impacts associated with this, right? One is on views, and the other is potentially on hill stability? And how do we get our arms around the solutions that would address both potential impacts?
Great question. I think when we have a better understanding of the extent of the potential diseased area, I mean, at some point, those trees are going to come out. They'll, they'll die. And at some point, they'll not be providing the service they are now to deflecting moisture off the hillside. Part of, I think, what we need to have a conversation about with our geotecs is the issue of water. Once we, once we have this soils report, one of the conversations I'm going to have with our geotecs is, talk to me about, what I heard from Steve, my translation of what I heard from Steve was, it's highly permeable soil, so loosely compacted, it's going to flow water in really well. And so the question is, you know, if that's a similar soil on the hillside, you know, what happens if the tree canopy goes? what happens if the tree canopy goes away? So those are all questions I think we're going to have to understand better to deal with at least the loss of trees that's going to happen inevitably, whether this property gets developed or not. As it relates to views, when we get to that, and we can get to there now, is what we talked about with the school district was to do kind of a 3D imaging of this property. And we're going to have to make some assumptions about how many trees are coming down when we do that, so that the views are as realistic as we can make them when that imagery comes forward for the council's consideration. And I know that Steve, in talking with Steve, one of the things they wanted to understand was, are they going to get a resolution from their board to move forward with this property? Because that makes a big difference on how much they spend on putting together some of these things that we're asking for right now. And the soil issue was one of the first hurdles to get over, I think. So the last issue that we haven't talked about yet, and we can go back and talk about all these more if you'd like, is traffic. And there were kind of a couple pieces that I think the council asked for. One was to understand the traffic needs for Discovery Drive. I think you've heard from some residents in West Highlands Park that have expressed concern over school buses and ambulances being on the same roadway. So I think we need to talk about that a little bit. And the other thing was, there was a request that there would be some traffic counts done at, particularly Grand Ridge Elementary was identified as one of the schools, that would be interesting to see what the traffic generation rates are for one of the school district's elementary schools, as opposed to just using the numbers out of ITE manual. And so I think Steve can address where they are right now with traffic information.
So looking at Discovery Drive, the traffic engineer's assessment was that Discovery, as it had west from 9th, is 2 lanes until the first signal light, where you turn left at 8th to head to the eastern entrance to the hospital and the other medical center building. Beyond 8th, it narrows to 1 lane until it gets, well, it narrows to 1 lane. His recommendation would be that regardless of whether there's any development on this parcel, that the roadway ought to be 2 lanes to 7th Avenue at least, which is the road that leads south to the emergency entrance to the hospital. That with 1 lane, you have a potential for a blockage and/or a delay in an emergency vehicle. If you have 2 lanes, there's a lane for traffic to pull over and allow the emergency vehicle to pass. Beyond that, then, it basically serves the residential area that exists on the west end of the Highlands area and potentially the school site, along with the 1 residential area that's under construction immediately west of the hospital. So that kind of deals with Discovery. As far as the school site itself, we did do traffic counting at Clark and Grand Ridge to get the number of vehicles in the AM and PM peaks for queuing.
What's the member Goodman?
So we have those numbers and the numbers of vehicles, the length of the queues in the worst-case situations. In the worst case, at Grand Ridge, you would be looking at a distance of about 700 feet. The proposed design provides about 1,650 feet of queue space on the site off of city streets. So I think that realistically, the pickup-drop-off traffic would be accommodated. Grand Ridge is a little interesting in that there's 120 kids that attend the basic or the before-and-after school care program. So there's about 120 kids that generally are dropped off before school and are not part of the general population that arrives shortly before the bell. The typical peak for school traffic in terms of queuing and potential backup is in the afternoon, when the parents arrive, sometimes a half hour before school, gets out to queue up at the space closest to the front door or at the end of the line, and wait for school to end. The morning's generally not much of an issue, because they generally arrive in sort of a onesie-twosie fashion, drop a kid off and depart.
Question that I have on this is, and I appreciate this verbal report, will we get some kind of document to go along with this?
Yeah.
Keith is nodding, he said yes. Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Questions in general for Keith or anyone else? No? Good for now? So I'll, just to clarify again a little bit on this question about trees and slopes. So it seems to me that you'd have 1 kind of plan if you were a warehouser and you had a forest full of Doug firs, and you wanted to reduce, you know, minimize the impact to the rest of your Doug firs. And then you have a potential different answer if you want to maintain canopy at its fullest while dealing with something. And you might have yet a third answer, that is, if you want to maintain slope strength as much as possible while dealing with an infestation of this root rot. So, you know, it's going to be important to understand the facets of that that have to do with maximizing slope stability, and the facets that have to do with addressing canopy, and the extent to which they're complementary, and the extent to which they're not complementary. Is that a reasonable question on my part?
Absolutely. You know, I think that what ends up happening on the slope and the trees, there will be a way to program it for an outcome that we want to optimize. So in other words, you know, it may very well be that we decide that the first thing we want is to establish a new tree species on that hillside that will grow, so that in 10 years, you know, whatever building gets built there is completely shielded by a new tree stand that is not affected by the existing disease. It could be that we decide that we wait for the existing trees to die, and then replant, and then there's, that impact is, you know, 10, 15 years from now. So yeah, we'll be able to, I think, weight our priorities if we decide to go down that road with the school district at some point.
I realize there's a real art to it. In my house in Minnesota, we had hybrid poplars, which I think only lasts about 30 years, but in 10 years, they're like 120 feet tall.
Yeah.
I mean, they just, they grow like bamboo.
Weeds, yeah.
Yeah. So anyhow, I'll be interested to see that.
Cottonwoods, yeah.
Are there questions from other council members? Are we done? Oh, Councilmember Hunt?
I think I, maybe I just didn't hear. So the geotech work, though, is completed and...
So the borings are done. Their consultant, AESI, will be writing up a report. So they'll write down their findings, identify what soils they found in their cores, and then we'll be able to allow our consultants to review that. And they'll be able to discuss whether they agree on that site stability conclusion that Steve alluded to earlier. Does that answer your question?
Was the, was, okay, so was the site stability conclusion, was that the conclusion of that consultant company that you just mentioned?
So Steve's understanding of that, he does not have the report yet, is that the conclusions are that the geology is stable.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? With that, I will ask if any members of the public wish to speak to this issue this evening.
I guess my first question, do the owners of these homes know what they're dealing with? Because the latest version of the plan that I've seen, anyway, is a road circling the site, so there'd be a road. Earlier versions showed a nice strip of trees, which were not going to survive anyway, so now there's a road right at the western boundary of, or the eastern boundary of the school, potential school site. I think in terms of trees and all, we're looking at, I don't, I see an arborist is, you know, but we're really looking at a forester. And somebody that's going to be looking at this hillside for the long term, in terms of what trees, what trees need to come down, which trees need to go in in replacement. And it's not, it's not easy. Those soils do drain, they don't hold much water, so you've got to deal with that. And we've been messing around with the hydrology in that area for decades now. Camp Creek was flowing before, before they did anything, when that was 40 acres up where the hospital was DNR Forest there. And Camp Creek was flowing, and there was, there was evidence there of old piping and all the rest at Camp Creek. That's all, of course, gone when it blew out. But, so there's definitely springs and all of that that's going on in the hillside. We also know that Reed, the guy that had the, that overexcavated the gravel pit where Home Depot is, and went down into the water table there. And that was quite a violation that she was just quite easily got away with. He was going to excavate the land just north of this, of this property, and it turned out that the soils, there was going to be gravel, and he did find out, going down fairly quickly, that the gravel disappeared, and it got into other material, and he abandoned the effort to do that. So it's not unsurprising that this property maybe has a different, different surface than it does down below. King County is dealing a lot with forest lands that have root rot that they are replanting because they're going to continue them to be in forest lands. It's a common problem. So there's people out there that are dealing with root rot issues in the long term. One of the problems with root rot in this area is, we're going to be having these potentially trees with compromised roots very close to buildings and schoolyard and that. Are we comfortable having, right at the top of the hill, cutting down most of that forest that's next to those trees, and then leaving trees right next to a school site? And which of those trees are safe to leave, right there, fully exposed to the south winds? And also, the more difficult problem is almost the east wind, which we get from the pressure differential between Puget Sound being low, eastern Washington being high. And that's where the roofs get blown off of Snoqualmie Ridge, and significant damages happened in the early days of Isiqua Highlands, with 3 trees that were left at some of the, near the wetlands, were blown to the west by the east winds. So there's, it's not a cinch, plus you're highly visible there to the southwest winds. There's a lot of work that needs to be figured out about that. Traffic, there's a whole bunch of entitlements to the land that was part of Isiqua Highlands to the east there. And we have to fully understand their entitlements and the traffic that that would generate. Remember, they've done their SEPA for that, they did the 4 to 1 and a lot of other things, and earned that traffic. This property is not, doesn't, hasn't earned anything in terms of traffic and the rest. And it's not been, there's no SEPA yet, and we don't know how that's going to work. The biggest problem is, we're trying to build a huge elementary school up there, and it's going to require lots of busing. Yeah, there'll be some kids that can walk to it, but a lot of the kids that go, can't go to the Grand Ridge School are on the, just, are right real close to Grand Ridge School, but they would have to cross 9th and Highlands Drive to get to this school, they're going to be bussed. So by going to this large school, which they need classrooms admittedly, we're increasing the traffic, we're increasing the size of the buildings, the heights of the buildings, and the parking. The latest deal is to put all the parking underneath the building, which sounds kind of nice in some ways, but at the same time, where is going to be our community park for the western part of the Highlands? If there's only parking underneath their building, that's not going to be available all the time. What public access will there be to the playground and some of those facilities outside of the school day?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this this evening?
What he said.
I heard a plus 1 in the audience. Anybody else? And I believe that we are adjourned. Thank you very much at home, and a great evening.